Hey, Bill.
He's ignoring me.
Yeah.
I said there's no white powder.
I'll let him go.
Okay, well, the light is on for us to get started. And good evening, everyone. And we've got a great turnout. And I'm sorry, we don't have enough chairs this evening. But I want to thank all of you for attending. Would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mary, could we get a roll call, please?
Olson, Sykes, Johnson, Callum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Coburn.
Sir, here.
Okay, thank you, Mary. First on our agenda is a special presentation. And this is from our Albany Police Department and recognizing an employee of the year. Chief Latanzio and Captain Lyles, thank you.
Good evening, Marion City Council and members of the public who are here. I got two people tonight that I want to recognize. The first one, I would like to ask Shannon Parker to come up front. And this is for 2017 civilian employee of the year for the police departments. Communication Specialist Shannon Parker has been with the department since 2003 and a communication specialist since 2008. She is an exceptional employee who provides excellent service to the public and internal staff members. In 2017, she continued her outstanding work. She is highly motivated, has excellent attention to detail, and makes quick and educated decisions. Shannon excels in her ability to quickly process and problem-solve new situations, relay critical information to patrol, multitask multiple demands for her attention, and adjust to ever-changing workload. Shannon has an advanced ability in which she can quickly recall individuals, vehicles, and locations of past situations and apply them to the current situation. Communication Specialist Shannon Parker has been influential in making the switch to a new computer system successful. She is a great resource for her coworkers and trainees and has helped them to adjust to the new duties, practices, and procedures. Shannon is heavily relied upon as a trainer. She trained several employees in 2017 while maintaining a positive and motivated approach to training. Thank you, Communication Specialist Shannon Parker, for demonstrating professionalism, motivation, tenacity, and character that proudly represents the police department and the citizens of Albany. Congratulations.
Now I know why her parents were here tonight. Dennis and Mary, hello. Yep. And of course Sergeant Parker, too. Congratulations, Shannon.
The next person I would like to recognize is Officer Jen Williams. Can you come up here, please? Officer Jen Williams is a 2017 sworn employee of the year for the Albany Police Department. Officer Jen Williams had a very active year in 2017. She assisted with the design and implementation of a new computerized training program for training new officers. This was a huge task to take on, and Officer Williams jumped at the opportunity. She attended meetings during and between her shifts while also trying out the system to work out potential issues. Officer William used the new training system while training her recruit. This was a trial period, and she was able to identify many bugs before full implementation of the program. Once this was completed, she provided training so the other field training officers could use the program. Through her dedication to this project, we now have a program that is user-friendly and making the job for all the field training officers easier. Officer Williams also took the initiative to write and submit a proposal for traffic safety signs to be placed on traffic signal cabinets and local businesses. The idea of this project is to raise awareness and to reduce the number of motor vehicle crashes in our city. Officer Williams researched the intersections and related crash data for implementation. Once the project was approved, she worked with the City Public Works and Oregon Department of Transportation to get the signs manufactured and placed around the city. Officer Williams managed to complete all these projects while working as a field training officer. She was assigned a recruit officer du train and mentor for 10 of the 12 months in 2017. Thank you, Officer Williams, for being committed to the member of the Albany Police Department and devoting your time and effort to others for the safety and well-being of our community. Congratulations.
Yep, thank you. And congratulations, Jen. I have known her since she was a teenager. So it just like amazes me, it makes me feel really old.
You're dating yourself.
See, I know. Yeah, but she's an outstanding officer, so, yeah, thank you. And our whole police department, we're very fortunate in Albany to have such quality staff and very dedicated public, you know, safety employees. So I want to thank everyone, so, thank you. Okay, and next we have is a couple scheduled public hearings. I do think there's probably some folks here that have some interest in our ordinances that we have, two in front of us this evening. The two scheduled public hearings, Mary, has anybody signed up on? How many? These were over the setting of the water rates and the stormwater management services. Was there anyone that was planning on speaking on those two agenda items? If you could raise your hands. So there wasn't, I think. I think some of the folks that signed up for this public hearing was thinking it was about our ordinances. So, Dawn Ray, was yours about the ordinances? Or was it about stormwater? Okay, Doug, what was yours on?
Mine is a license to hobby.
Okay. And then Doug Laramie, what was yours on?
On the proposal for, I'm not sure what to call it, the extra police powers and parts I can spell.
Okay. So Carol Davies, was yours on stormwater?
I'd know for the ordinance.
Okay. Or Kathy Lassour.
Of course.
And Emma?
Yeah.
Probably the same. And then Carolyn?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So there wasn't anyone then on those public hearings. So what I'll do is I'll go ahead and move the agenda items since staff, did you have anyone that needed, any staff members that needed to be out early?
We're fine. No, we're fine. Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and proceed with the ordinances. So, and we usually have the business from the public before, but I want the police department to give us an update on these ordinances. So first, and then we will open it up for public comment on the ordinances. Okay? All right. Chief? And Chris?
Well, I'll cap on it enough. We're going to go over the enhanced law enforcement area, which most people are geared for. If you want to go. So the enhanced law enforcement area is comprised of .9 square miles of city property. Within the city of Albany, there's 17.75 square miles, depending on where you look, 17.7-ish square miles, making the enhanced law enforcement area about 5% of the overall land mass of Albany.
Chris, could you get just a little closer? I'm sure there are some people who have a hard time here.
No problem. So, like I was saying, the land mass within the enhanced law enforcement area equals about 5% of Albany. In that land mass, there's 19.2% of the crime. You can change it to the next one. So the, so 5% of the land mass, there's 19.2% of the crime, giving it a very disproportionate amount across the board. So in order to attack this and kind of make it so this area isn't so ridden with crime, we're proposing the enhanced law enforcement area. What this does is allow the judge to issue an exclusion from the zone. So anybody who's committing, they have to be convicted of the crime within the zone, not outside the zone, within the zone. And they have to have three or more variances of misdemeanors, felonies, or a few AMC codes. The judge at that point, if they need to come into the zone for, say, counseling or court aid or any of the above, can set variances for them to enter the zone, go to that, and then exit the zone. The whole, the whole idea of this code is not to take away those services that are provided within the zone. It's to get them out of the zone when their services aren't needed or they aren't using those services because of what they're doing on the off time that the officer should receive those services. And within the zone, there's multiple houses that would fall under this and people that we have drug-related crimes constantly at that, issues and stuff like that, that would just bring it to a better standing and kind of rid the area of that issue, therefore making it a safer place. If you go to the next slide, it's a bigger map for everyone to see. So the proposed zone has, this idea has been used in Ashland since 2011. Our proposed zone goes from Elm to Pine. The Elm side, it's north of Pacific on the, or sorry, on the Elm side, it's north of 11th. On the Pine side, it's north of Pacific. And then it encompasses the railroad tracks.
So, Marion Council, so this is basically another tool for the judge to be able to use for when we have somebody who's a multiple offender. There's constant times when the judge winds up with somebody before them and they have several cases they need to deal with. And this is only for those where the violation actually occurred within this zone, and it's for all new cases. So it's not any old ones that happened before. It's for anything that happens new. And then the judge sets the criteria for it. So it's anywhere from three months up to a year. And then the judge also can allow them to, you know, put in the actual order itself, you're allowed to go to court, you're allowed to go to mental health, and there's other services they need to do. So the judge can tailor it based on the person that's there. You know, if they're receiving counseling, say, at church or something like that, the judge can put that in there and allow them to go there. But then help to specify the time when they're allowed to be in and out so that the officer knows in case they come across this person, when they're allowed to be there.
So if they, say, are going to, wanting to go to a soup kitchen to be able to get some meals or church service, they can be able to have that put in there? And also say if they're going to be maybe going to chance for services, they're able to go?
Yes, as long as the judge puts that in the order, they're allowed to do that.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Is that it? All right.
Question?
Yep.
So, Chris or Chief, this doesn't change what the police department's doing. This changes what the judge is doing. Is that correct?
Initially, correct. But then what it does, it gives us a tool for when, if we see that person in the zone or say someone calls us and we come across this person and they do a check on him and find out that he has an order, he's not allowed to be there, then that person will get arrested and removed from the zone.
But it's the judge's decision at the end of the day if he wants to implement this onto somebody, based on what they've done inside the zone.
Okay. All right. And then also, did you want to touch base a little bit on the first ordinance that prohibited camping?
I can, if you'd like.
Okay. And then also, I believe I heard somebody had a concern over the motor vehicle parking? Was that, was that one of them, Doug, that you had a concern on? Or?
Just event like residence.
Oh, okay. Okay. It wasn't on the motor vehicle parking.
Okay. And we did do some changes to the boarding up structures that I could go over after this one?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So the other code being proposed is prohibited camping. What this code does is it prohibits camping on public property. Based on the last two years since I've been in this position, we've had numbers of areas where people are camping in the public space, which is driving away the normal user. Really, it just adds up to the part where they're taking over the space by adding, bringing in drug, paraphernalia, trash that piles up, needles, that kind of stuff, beer bottles, disposing of human waste in this area, just on the ground, not using facilities. And that's really just kind of taking over what the original structure of those areas were set aside for. So this code is to kind of rectify that. Last year, as I mentioned in the work session, me and Lieutenant, Captain Lyles now, pulled out 500 pounds of trash out from underneath the Pacific overpass behind Swanson Park, where it was pretty heavy camping. And with this code, it discusses being under bridges and viaducts as well, which is a heavy problem due to ODOT not really wanting to do anything about that growing issue. So it allows us to use this code to go onto that property as well and deal with the growing issues. Do you want to go to the next one? This is the bridge where I'm talking about behind Ellsworth, or behind Swanson Pool, underneath the Pacific overpass, which is just a constant increase of trash that has to be removed, mostly by us. ODOT takes about 30 days plus to get out there, where we'll do it that day or get Public Works to come out there the next day, just so we don't have this ever lingering, lingering issue. Okay. And then on, so, so on the code for boarding up the structures, we changed it to go to Title VII under public nuisances. After changing that, we changed a few of the definitions, such as real property versus property, and added an image so that people understood how the structures are to be boarded up. We had some people in building that just wanted that to be more of a reference point for them to go to, so it wasn't as confusing as just reading it. And then they could reference the size of material that they need to use by looking at the code. And we took out the abatement process so that we weren't just repeating it in multiple different sections and just reference them to go back to the section 7.84 so that they could read that there. And we're not keeping that growing kind of flooding of the code and just basic cleanup. We didn't change any major portions of it at all.
Okay. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, any questions? We'll read out the changes. Okay. All right. Thank you. So we'll open it up then for public comment on these ordinances before we have their first reading. And so the first who had wanted to sign up was Dawn Ray. Did you still want to speak? So when I do call your name, or I'll also be asking if there's anybody that wants to, you know, raise their hand later and come forward, but you'll need to state your name and spell your last name and then furnish your address. Thank you.
My name is Dawn Ray. I live at 5394 Davidson Street, Albany. I don't have much to say because I don't understand this move, but it does seem to me that, taking into account the fact that these folks are having trouble enough living in society and adjusting to it, without further asking them to have another strike against them where they cannot get the services that they need, because we all know that the central area is where the churches are, the schools are, the city, the county. They're in and out of here all the time, and they need to be. They need to have that freedom. If they're, if they are not, then that's up to the courts to put them where they should be. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Okay. Let's see. So Doug Laramie?
My name is Doug Laramie. That's L-A-R-I-M-E. I live at 1205 First Avenue East on the corner of First and Sherman. My wife and I have lived at this location, purchased the house, and lived at this location for approximately 12 years. During that time, not only us, but many of our neighbors have put in a great deal of time, effort, and money trying to improve our neighborhood. And things have gotten better. But there's still quite a bit of work to do, as evidenced by the officers' statistics of crime in our area. I'm absolutely in favor of this proposal. And I, maybe I misunderstood what I read in the paper. I thought it said someone had to have three felonies within six months to be removed from the area. Is that correct?
Um, no. I think just three, three felonies.
Misdemeanors.
Felonies or misdemeanors.
Misdemeanors. Or violations of, of the city ordinances.
Okay. All right. Well, that is coming down pretty hard. And I, you know, I have nothing against homeless people. But I do value the effort and the money that we've put into our property and, as well as our neighbors. And I think we should be able to keep our property in good condition without having to pick up trash and, you know. I'm, I'm very thankful for the police services in our area. I wish I didn't see them quite so often. But we have had arrests take place right in front of our house. My daughter has had to call, or my, excuse me, my granddaughter has had to call the police for domestic disturbances right next door. I was assaulted by a druggie who lived next door. They've since moved out. But the point being, you know, it could be a really nice neighborhood, and it hasn't had the greatest reputation in the past, and there are a lot of folks trying to make it better. So if, if this can help to some degree, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Doug. Next is Carol Davies.
I'd like to speak with Kathy Lassour.
Okay, yes.
So my name is Carol Davies. It's D-A-V-I-E-S. My address is 224 Sherman Street Northeast, and I am in the district with the proposed ordinance.
My name is Kathy Lashere. I live at 130 Sherman Street Northeast. And, that's it.
Okay. So I, neither one of us are experienced speakers, so I hope you don't mind. I brought my phone with me for some talking points. So I have seen our neighbors working so hard to make their properties desirable. I myself moved in and we've done a lot of work to our house. My house is one of two houses that are right adjacent to the Dave Clark path, and I also have a garden that's on the path. So I have a somewhat unique perspective on what's going on along the path and along the riverfront. In the summertime, it gets very noisy. There are a lot of disturbances. There are campers who are camping illegally, yelling, causing a lot of noise. I have, when walking on the path, I've had to step over people who are sleeping on the Just recently, a group of kids came by and cleaned up the path, and it looked fabulous for two days. And two days later, it was totally trashed again with discarded clothing, with blankets, and a lot of trash, a lot of food trash. Also, in my garden area, I have found used syringes, which I also find really disturbing. I have my neighbor next door, who is the other house, which is on the path. She wasn't able to make it, but she did ask me to mention that she has four children. She just moved to this area last summer. And she has had some really bad encounters with people sleeping on her lawn. One was trying to lure her youngest child out of the yard and onto the path. Her child is seven years old. And she's also found a lot of trash and is really concerned about one of her children coming across them, possibly getting stuck by a needle. There are also some of our neighbors who have been robbed of items. Some people have been so brazen as to actually go up on somebody's porch steps and steal items. So it is, it's a tremendous problem for our area. And as Doug said before me, we are really trying to make our neighborhood a safe and enjoyable place to live. I have tremendous compassion for people who are unhoused and who are trying to access services. As a matter of fact, I'm working with the group to possibly get some housing in this area so that there will be fewer people that are unhoused. So I, I want to go on record as saying that, you know, I am not against people who don't have permanent homes. What I am against is the, the trash and the dangerous circumstances that we're subjected to on a daily basis. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carol.
I just want to add to what Carol said is, I was wondering, my question is, why do they stop the boundary at Pine Street? And why don't they carry it over to Bowman Park, which the whole area is all the same to us? We, we have the same people walking through and camping and meeting in that area. It's all used, all up and down the river there. And I myself have witnessed drug deals down at the river and walking over people, stolen items being put on our sidewalk, hyberdermic needles in our yards. So, but we notice a lot. It's the same people we see. We know them. We see them and we recognize them there. So I think that this kind of a ordinance would be good for those kind of people. And so I want to just voice my approval for the enforcement.
Well, and I guess I was, we don't have the, the best map that was in front of us, so I was presuming that it was within the Cara district boundaries. It's not the full boundaries, but I thought maybe it'd be going over to Gary Street. But you're right, Kathy, I see that it isn't towards Gary Street to include Bowman Park on that. So we can check in on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you. Next, Emma Eaton?
My name is, I'm a stranger.
Hello, Emma.
My name is Emma Eaton. The last name is spelled E-A-T-O-N. My address is 1638 First Avenue East. Proud to be there.
Can you move the microphone closer to your mouth so people can hear?
Sorry.
I'm glad you want to hear.
Yeah, it'll move, yeah.
Does that better?
Yep, yes. Great.
I've lived in several different neighborhoods in this city. I've lived on the east side. I've lived on the west side. I've lived on the south. I've never seen such spirit and experienced such persistence and soul to try to make something work. We are trying so hard to rid ourselves of a stigma, to be better, because really, any city is only good as its weakest part. You need to never forget that. That's my philosophy. We have also started a community program called RIN. It's a division under Parks and Rec. It is to clean up the neighborhood, to build interest in coming back into our park. And if I understood the statistics correctly, Bowman Park is the biggest problem in the system. So I feel that it is necessary that it be included in this enhancement program. I respect anyone that cares for people that are of less or anything. I don't know how to say this correctly, so I'll just say it with my heart. Anyone that wants to improve themselves, I'll help you make it happen. But if I see repeatedly at my door, I can't do that. I, I just can't. It's, it's hard work to, to be an adult and not, I don't understand, I don't have a good understanding of the social services. I'd be the first to say that. But I will work until my bones and my fingers crack to try to make this neighborhood better. And I, it's here. It's catching. It's coming. And I, it's here, it's catching, it's coming. Give us a chance. I'm sorry, it's just an emotional thing for me, so please forgive me. So I wanted to make a point that yes, I think it should go to Gary Street. I think because Bowman is such an issue, it should definitely be included. I thought it was important that you know that we are trying to do something for ourselves. We do not expect you to do it for us, as citizens of our community. RIN is that first step. If you speak to some of those officers back there, they know I'm already doing it. I had an abandoned house across the street from me that was a foreclosure and because it was not boarded up properly, squatters got in it. It took two years to get them out. So that's a very valid point. And what we found in that house, I wanted to see it because I wanted to know the reality of what was going on there. I could not in my worst imagination ever imagining that in a house. And now, because we fought and we called and we bugged and I said, "You will log my call? Did you log my call? Who are you? What are you doing? Why are you here?" And I paid attention. Someone bought it. Her name is Sherry. She loves it. She went in and she rolled up her sleeves, she cleaned up the crap, she cleaned literally off the floors, rewired, replumbed. The ceiling was falling, she redid that. It's got a soul again. It's coming back, just like the neighborhood. Come on over and check us out. You should see two or three of the brand new, almost brand new looking homes that are on one block from me. It's catching. We can do it. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you Emma, and I know you and your neighbors have really put a lot of energy into the neighborhood and really overseeing it and being good stewards. And I want to thank you for also adopting the park program for Bowman Park and walking along and kind of patrolling that too, so really thank you.
Let's see, Carolyn, did you want to speak too?
Yeah.
My name is Carolyn Larime. My husband Doug spoke earlier, last name is L-A-R-I-M-E. And I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal. The first day when we moved into our house, there was a police chase through our yard. That was some 12 years ago. Since then, we've spoken before grand juries, we had bullets fired through our driveway, as Doug said, there were drug dealers, quite a few. But we've persevered and I love our neighborhood. We've got college professors, we've got contractors, we've got schoolteachers, we've got engineers, a whole assortment, a great diversity of people. And in the, well, my friend back there, Lila, and I started the community garden and it is in the neighborhood. It's right along the Dave Clark path. So whenever we are down there working, we see what's going on. And one thing that we wanted to do from the very beginning, because we realized that there are people who are hungry, we put rows outside the fence of the garden so that anybody walking along can pick tomatoes, they can pick cucumbers, they can get some good helpful food. And we also deliver to fish. We have an area set aside in the garden and we deliver every other day during, from spring to fall really. So we're not, we're trying to just have everybody live together. And I'm not at all against people who are, who don't have homes, as Carol said. But we are against crime. And if this will help us, please do it. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you Carolyn. Okay, that's it that signed up on the list, so is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yeah, Sharon on the, this would be on the ordinances.
Yes, I'm Sharon Geisler. I live at 728 10th Avenue Southwest. My home is in the exclusion area or the proposed exclusion area and I'm, 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 well first of all, I'm going to read what I wrote and then I want to say some things based on what I'm hearing. I'm speaking tonight as a citizen and also on behalf of people who don't have homes. I've met many people without homes at our community meal that we have at First Christian Church and have been doing for the last seven years. And I know some of our guests who come and eat with us would fall into this classification and yet they're still hungry and they still need hospitality. And I really hear the people who are talking. What we have here is this huge cultural problem that we have with homelessness, with people without homes. And I just don't think this particular ordinance is going to help us very much and I'll tell you why. We've already talked about the services in the center of the city and I think the kinds of services like mental health and things, yes, people could get a judge's order, or going to the Carnegie Library, which people do usually very peacefully and just spend their time there, they would not be able to do. So it would be restricted. And I'm wondering if places like Mental Health, the Consortium, the Courthouse, the library services that are downtown, I wonder if those people have been consulted, inputting on this plan? This is a pretty, this is a pretty big plan. And I'm trying to understand just exactly what the intent is and it's hard not to come away with the idea that it's to make it a little bit harder to survive or to certainly thrive and that is not what homeless people do in Albany. We know that this whole issue is so complex and we know that. But some other things we know, we know there aren't enough shelter beds in Albany for all the people who are homeless. There just aren't. If every single person came in off the street and asked for a bed, they're not there. And we also know there are reasons why some people cannot use the shelters. Their mental illness doesn't allow them to, their behavior doesn't allow them to, and they can't. And then the other piece is, there's not enough low-income housing for people. And even though the job market is better, the situation is that low-income jobs do not give people enough money to sustain a roof over their head unless there are multiple incomes in a family. So, but boy, I don't envy the police. We have put them right in this intersection of this problem that really doesn't have any solutions. Because people without homes still have to be somewhere 24 hours a day and they have to take care of their needs and they have so few legal places to be, that they create issues for the community at large and police are at the interface just all the time between us. And I want to say my own experience with the Albany Police Department, the very few times we've had to have them come to the community meal, they have been wonderful, they've been respectful to us and to the people they're dealing with and just they've had great professional skill. And again, they have, in this issue, they have the very hardest job because they really have problems that don't have reasonable solutions. And I think what really scared me this morning when I read the paper was that word enhanced. I remember enhanced interrogation sent chills up my spine. I believe that everyone should be treated equally under existing laws and to me, the word enhanced means that some would be more, treated more harshly than others. I don't believe that this ordinance would be applied to me if I transgressed in the same way. I just don't. I just don't think it would. So I leave these questions. What have the experiences of other places been with this kind of ordinance? I thought I read not too long ago that somebody had just rescinded it, maybe Eugene, I'm not sure, but I thought I had just read that it hadn't worked out very well. I'm not even sure it's constitutional, but I suppose you've passed on that. And then what kind of a burden does this place on the police? And this is sort of tongue in cheek, but we don't mean to end homelessness by increasing our jail beds, do we? That's not what we want to do. And finally, does this reflect who we are? Is this, is this building bridges or is this building walls? Seems kind of popular right now. And is this where we want to put our resources? Are there better ways to do this? And that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you Sharon. Okay, anyone else? So, yeah, Brianna, and then Bill?
I need to talk to someone else.
Oh, okay. Are you wanting to speak on this subject or a different subject? Okay, okay. Okay, yep, I see, we'll get to it David. Yeah, hi Brianna.
Hi everyone, my name is Brianna Irish, I-R-I-S-H. I live at 724th Avenue Southwest. I won't pretend to be a great public speaker, but I'd just like to say a little bit. So the thing that makes a community great is the people. And I think we're going at it in the wrong direction. Instead of criminalizing these people who actually have nowhere to go, I think we need to invest in them. And we need to invest in our humanity because these people are part of our community. And you say you love your neighborhood, your neighborhood is made up of the people around you. And you need to invest in the people around you and care for the people around you instead of dismissing them and criminalizing their mere existence. That's not the answer here. So that's all I have to say. Please remember your humanity because these are still humans and they're still dealing with things that we have no idea about. Things behind them, things in their lives that they have no control over and they're merely reacting to a difficult home life growing up, you know, a mental illness, drug abuse. This is not something that they want. Do you think that they want to be staying, living on the streets? That's not what anybody wants. And we need to invest in people rather than criminalizing them.
Okay, thank you Brianna. Okay, Bill? Bill, are you wanting to talk about the same ordinances? Yep, okay.
My name is William Root, R-O-T. I live at 2634 Northwest Valley View in North Albany. And I do, I feel for the people that have been speaking for this ordinance, but I think it has an effect that they don't feel that they're thinking about. One of the things, part of the area that is involved in this includes Oxford Houses, Signs of Victory, the St. Mary's Soup Kitchen, the First Christian Church Community Meal. What the effect of this ordinance would be is that some people would be blocked from going to their home for up to a year. They would be blocked from going to a free meal for over a year for nothing more than a misdemeanor. Smoking marijuana in public, some things like that could cause somebody who lives in an Oxford House to be told that he can no longer live there for up to a year. That's not right. That is dilating a right that has been in our constitution for many years. And that's a right of being able to have a place to live and food to eat. And this enhanced ordinance takes away that right for some people. And like I said, I feel sorry for the people that live within this area that have had problems with the homeless people, but having an enhanced ordinance that would keep them out of their own homes or their own places where they reside is not the right way to do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you Bill. Okay, David?
My name is David Johnson, J-O-H-N-S-O-N. I live at 7885 Northeast Todd Drive. However, I do have a building in downtown Albany in this area that you're looking at. It's the wheelhouse on 421 Water Avenue Northeast. So I want to put some numbers for you in real perspective. As a business owner, I looked at my accounting in the last five years. I have spent $32,843.20 on changes to my building, repairs, cleaning and other items related to graffiti, trespassing, breaking in, using my facility illegally and things of that nature. So I'm just one business in the downtown area. So I've heard a lot of people say, yeah, there's certain rights that people have and I'm not saying that, I agree with that, there are rights that everybody should have. But I remember there was a book that came out and it said something about all the important things I learned, I learned in kindergarten. And one of them is pick up after yourself, clean up after yourself. The first picture they showed there on the illegal camping is underneath the walkway in front of my building. I used to clean that riverfront all the time, but it's gotten so unsafe to go down there with needles, human excrements, human waste, but I can't do it anymore. I can also tell you when the churches give out free clothing and when they give the cold weather blankets, because within a day or so, I have a huge amount of those on the pathway in front of my building along the river. And things, they use them once and they throw them out. I'm glad they got the blankets. But again, back to my whole thing on important things I learned in kindergarten, take care of yourself. All I'm asking is for those people to do the things that they learned in kindergarten. Otherwise, you know, they're costing a lot of time, energy and money for the business owners and the homeowners in the downtown area. And I'm fully in support of this thing because something that needs to be changed because it's not working what we're doing and it's costing a lot of money to the businesses and the residents down in this area. Thank you.
Thank you David. And that's a really good point, you know, because I don't think a lot of people there, you know, very kind and giving and when they do give out blankets and belongings and they're enabling somebody to stay homeless. Where we do have the shelters and we do have agencies to work with folks to get them into housing, but it is a cost and also our Parks Department has had to incur very thousands of dollars the last couple of years in cleaning up camps and the riverfronts too. I know Portland, City of Portland has spent a million dollars last year in cleaning up from camps. So you can, communities can continue to enable it and, but it's going to come with a cost. But it's also a safety issue for the people that are having to clean up after somebody's homeless camp too. That is a big safety issue, so, yeah.
On the garbage?
Go ahead and come to the podium, yeah.
On the garbage? You know, hey, they're throwing garbage down the river, in front of the river, in front of my place and right here, 10 feet away from me is a garbage can, which is empty because they don't put anything in there. Back to kindergarten, put your garbage where it's supposed to be, not throwing down the river when there's a garbage can right next to you. I don't get that and neither does the city because I've helped them clean up down below there.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I've witnessed it myself where I've seen a lot of clothing hanging over the riverbank and you can't access to clean it up, but when the high water level comes, that... But when the high water level comes, that, all that waste is just going down our rivers. It's polluting our rivers, it's everyone's, you know, drinking water, and it is very, very hard on the fish and habitat that has to be able to come across that waste. So, yeah, very good point on that. So, thank you. Thank you, David. Yeah. Okay, yes. Or Doug Urdie commented. Did you want to add a comment?
I just had a question.
Yep, okay. Uh-huh. And we'll let some other folks speak, too.
I just wanted to say that I think some folks are talking about two different things. Homeless people do not have to be criminals. I have nothing against a homeless person going to get a meal, going to get clothing, whatever they need. They don't have to break the law.
Yep. Good point. Yeah. So, okay, Lisa, and then the lady folks up front.
Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association. I just wanted to comment that the Albany Downtown Association truly appreciates all the efforts of the Albany Police Department, especially in keeping downtown safe. We appreciate they do to support our downtown merchants, as well as all the efforts during so many events that we have at Monty Park. So, thank you to our police.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Dale Salston, S-A-L-S-T-O-N. My address is 335 Chicago Street, Southeast. And I just wanted to speak to a couple of things as far as when they were talking, the police officers were talking about kind of what the judge would order. And I think that that would be pretty restrictive, because, for example, there are people that come to our community meal that on a very rainy, cold winter night, they're not going to be there from 4:30 to 5:30. They're going to be there maybe from 4:00 to 6:30, you know? So, to have the restrictions of when they could go for mental health appointments, or when they could go for DD treatment, or whatever, or maybe they're in crisis, so there's going to be times that are not going to be able to be so deliberately scheduled to meet their needs. And that would be important to kind of look at how that would be addressed. And also, just some of the concerns about the people. Some people are extremely mentally ill and very disorganized in their thinking, and so some of their behaviors are not something that they could really kind of take from other kinds of learning. And they might be making decisions that are based on delusions or all kinds of things. And I think that needs to be taken into effect. And these people are not necessarily criminals or violent, but they might have misdemeanors that would put them in this category. Thank you.
Right. And we do hope that you can encourage them to work with our mental health professionals and to make sure they're able to stay stable, and then so they are able to move in towards housing.
Yeah.
But that's the best approach for the folks that are in that situation, is to work with the mental health professionals.
Right. And I just, I also, in addressing the enabling, I just want to say that I know for a fact that landlords across Albany, many of them, most of them, are asking for proof of three times the amount of the rent of income. And homeless people have many barriers to employment as well as to housing. And so, because our community has not developed housing, and because our population has grown, people are moving into housing that was, that used to be available for low-income housing is no longer available.
And I do want, you know, people to know that, you know, with the city, we are very supportive of low-income housing, and we support, you know, a program that has 136 of the lowest, you know, rents of apartment units in Albany. So, we're very supportive of it. And so, you know, we all understand what some of those hurdles are for somebody to get into housing. But I always look at it, it's a hurdle, it's never a barrier. So, I've seen many success stories of getting people that we've had homeless in our community get into housing. So, it just, you know, they got to follow the steps to get towards that, so.
Can I have two more seconds?
Yeah. And then, and then we'll have Tim.
All these issues, which are so real about garbage and stuff, really will not be impacted by this ordinance. I just, I did think it's a bit of apples and oranges. We're not talking about behavior, and they should catch somebody throwing something away. The ordinance, it's why I think the ordinance may be ill-conceived or not the right thing to do.
Well, I think, well, I think maybe might be some confusion on there, because it would be as if they end up having the violations, and then they continue to, say, camp out in a certain area, say if they are, you know, hanging out around the wheelhouse, then that would be, you know, the violation would prohibit them from going back to that area.
Is there any areas that people can sleep in and?
So, we don't allow people to, you know, tent camp in public spaces. Our public spaces are for the public to enjoy, and it's not for people to use as their personal residences or their personal restroom. So, it's for everyone to enjoy. And I hear from many people on the opposite side of the fence that do not want homeless folks taking up the public spaces. So, we need to have a balance there. And that's where, you know, if somebody is homeless or anyone, you know, they want to hang out in a public space, they can, no one's going to question it. But it's if you're being disrespectful to that space, then that's where you need to have the tools to end up being, you know, have the, so the police can kind of enforce for them to not, you know, to be able to make sure that space stays cleaned up. But it's trying to find a balance, but we also need to have the tools, you know, and it's for our community overall, too, for our quality of life in our community. But we want to help a homeless person get into housing, not enable them to stay homeless. I saw a hand that was up in the back. Yes, sir? Yes, uh-huh.
Do you want to say my address or?
Yes, please. And your name? Spell your last name, please.
My name's Joshua Stanley, S-T-A-N-L-E-Y. I live at 3500 Lafayette, just down the road in the beautiful Ward 2 from Kenopa.
Close to me, yeah.
Yeah. So, a couple of things I would like to point out. One, I would like to be another voice in opposition to this. There are a lot of people that spoke before me that had mentioned a lot of the things that I've written down to ask, one being, has Ashland ever faced lawsuits over this? And how much did that cost the city? How much is it going to cost the city for the judges to make all these exemptions when they've got dozens of people coming to them asking for exemptions to get into the zone to get to these services? A lot of these services can be random or at will, so it's not something that a lot of these folks can plan out all the time. And this law definitely is going to be applied unequally. I doubt that, say, you know, Tom and Joe down at the bar wander back to their car and pee in a bush on the way there are going to get the same treatment as a homeless person, and that's not right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joshua. Okay, anyone else on these? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Tim, I missed Jeff. So, yeah, then John.
I'm Tim Graves. I live at 1910 Gary Street. I am the pastor of the First Christian Church, the lead pastor. And in the role of a pastor, I play multiple roles. One of them, and I certainly want to validate all those who talk about the difficulties that they struggle with, we are a downtown church. We certainly deal with some of these very same issues. We have had human waste in places around our building. We've dealt with, I've had to deal with the police when someone found a door unlocked, which was our fault, but managed to come into our building. So, and we, I want to underscore what Sharon Geisler said in terms of the fact that we have always had a good working relationship with our police and fully support them. However, what's important to remember is that I, what I keep hearing, and what I heard when I listened to the audio tape of the work session, is I kept hearing terms like "they" and "them" and "those people," describing an entire group of people based on the behavior of some members. And homelessness is complex, no doubt about it, and I don't deny these problems. I've, I'm a runner. I have seen the mess on the Dave Clark trail. I've run around it on occasion. But we're talking about real human beings with real struggles. For starters, I would invite any one of you in this room to join us on a Tuesday evening between 4:30 and 6:30. Come and have a free meal and sit at a table with people who are struggling. Build relationships. Perhaps what concerns me the most about this, besides the fact that we're not looking at people, we're looking at a group of people, and criminalizing that group of people, is that this enhancement zone basically excludes people from the ministry of my church, from the ministry that we provide. And I'm not convinced that most of the folks would even be aware, would necessarily be aware enough to ask for an exclusion or an exception from a judge to come to us. I deal with any number of individuals who show up at my doorstep, the bane of my existence. I can never get something completed on the computer, because I'm dealing with people. But that's my job, too. And it is in those moments when I can help redirect those people to the very services that we do have, and to problem solve sometimes. And sometimes there aren't solutions. Sometimes there are not easy solutions. Sometimes I have to say, unfortunately, I can't help you. It's tough. But please, please do not forget, we are talking about real human beings with real struggles. People with mental illness, yes. Some people who are just down on their luck for a short period of time. Some people who have made some very bad choices. Many people who did not learn those lessons in kindergarten, unfortunately. I'm not convinced that an exclusion zone is the solution to the problem. I want to support our police, but I do not think that that's the solution to the problem.
Question, Mayor?
Yeah.
Do you have a suggestion what a solution might be? I mean, you folks do some very good things, feeding people, and I know the St. Mary's does, and First United Methodist, and, 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 a lot of places. Nobody wants to have folks stay overnight at their place. And, I mean, that is basically what homelessness is all about, is you don't have a place to lay your head. Is there, I mean, can we be part of a solution? Can we come to, come to find, you know, is there a council of churches that can be put together to do something about that? Is there, I mean?
Well, yeah.
And what, I'm not asking you to put you on the spot right here, right now. What I'm saying is, you've got a lot of energy, your people have a lot of energy, come back with a solution. I mean, if there's, you know, sometimes weird things work, too. I'm an aficionado of weird. So, I would ask you, invite you to do that.
A spirit after my own heart, an aficionado after weird. We will be back. You can count on that. I don't have the solution to the problem. I don't think any one of us has the whole solution. We have a group at the church that at this very point, full-time, is working to try to figure out some longer-term solutions, because there's long-term issues and there's short-term issues. And the short-term issue is what we have been addressing for quite some time, giving somebody a meal. And that's important, but that's not going to solve the problem. And so, we have a group that's very specifically, and has talked with our mayor some, about looking at housing needs. And we got a big splash in the paper about a particular path, which is just one option. It's not something that we've decided to do by any means. But we are trying to figure out solutions, learn from other agencies within the city. So, yes, you can expect that we will be back and be asking for your help.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And, you know, and a part of it, this isn't something new that we've heard. I mean, it's, this all started when we had Camp Boondoggle back in 2006. So, this has been something that has been ongoing. But what we found, we, the homeless that we had back in 2006, we got into housing. But this, you know, but there's new folks that come along, there's people that are in housing today, and they'll be out of housing tomorrow. So, homelessness will never go away. So, it will always be a continuing problem. And that's why for our Glen County Ten Year Homeless Plan, we didn't call it the End Homelessness that they did nationwide, because we knew there was, you would never end homelessness. But we do have kind of the pieces together in our community, and I'm proud of what we have done in our community for addressing homelessness. Because if you notice, it is not as visible, and we do not have as much demand as many other communities do in a community our size. So, because it's been, we've got caring community, caring, very caring people in our community that have been working on the homeless issue for many years, and being able to, including our Hart Board that meets monthly to address homeless issues. And a part of that ends up being our adult service team that works individually on certain cases of helping people to be able to get into housing. So, like I said, it's not a barrier, it's always a hurdle for each person. But we have really accomplished a lot in our community, and folks really should be, you know, proud of what we have done. But as I say, the problem, it's homelessness will always be there. So, there's always new needs that come along and new issues. And, but we're always here as a city to address all of those issues.
And because of the people we are, we want to do better.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Okay. And, yeah, Jeff?
Jeff Blackford, E-L-E-C-K-F-O-R-E, 804 Broad Albin, Albany. I'm also the director of Chance, and Chance's community, helping addicts negotiate change effectively. And we are a social service organization here in Albany. And instead of making an exclusionary zone, I would encourage us to offer diversionary tactics, maybe creating a court diversion or a jail diversion program, where social service organizations can help solve the issue by having the police department contact us at Chance or other social service organizations to be the mitigator, to help solve the issue, to help find solutions and resources for the individuals. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, was there anyone else that wanted to speak on these ordinances? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, council, you do have on the dais, all, sort of, a few of them, I think, had a few little minor cleanup changes that was presented to you on Monday night, and we have first readings that are needing to be done. So, are you ready for the first reading of ordinances? Okay, all right. Let's see. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to start with the first one, which is prohibited camping? And that is on page 15.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code Title VII by the creation of Section 7.84210 titled Prohibited Camping and Declaring an Emergency.
Move to have it read a second time, title only?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. There will be a second reading on that. And the next one is on page 17. And this one has been amended.
Can I confirm the two noes, please? That was Johnson and Olson voting no.
Yes.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII by the creation of Section 7.84220 titled Enhanced Law Enforcement Area.
Move to have it read a second time, title only?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Motion does not carry. So, that's first reading. And the next one would be over motor vehicle parking. That's on page 20.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter 13.21 titled Regulations for Motor Vehicle Parking.
Move to have it read a second time, title only?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. There's one no. That one's held over. And the next one is on abandoned vehicles. That's on page 23.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter 13.70 titled abandoned vehicles.
Move to have it read a second time, title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. And next is boarding up structures. This one is another draft that was on the dais, but the original was on page 25.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII by the creation of Section 7.84, whoops, I'm sorry, that's the one we already did.
Read a second time, title only.
No, I'm not, I'm not done. Yeah.
Right here.
Let him read it first, right?
Yeah.
Before he says no.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII by the creation of Section 7.82 titled boarding up structures.
Move to have it read a second time, title only.
Second.
Okay. And this is the one for abandoned structures. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. Second reading on that one.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VII by the creation of Section 7.82 titled boarding up structures.
Move past here, next.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made in a second. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? This one would be on boarding up structures. Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. That one passes. Okay. And then, let's do the adoption of the resolution for setting the motor vehicle parking fees. Well, no, actually, we have not amended the ordinance on it, so holding that one over. So, folks, with that, you're probably wondering what just took place. So, we have to have two readings on any ordinance before it can be adopted. So, since there wasn't a unanimous on the first for having the ordinance be read a second time, then it's held over for two weeks till our next meeting. So, our next meeting will be the second reading, and that's when the council will take action on the ordinances. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you for attending.
And I would like to say, I've wanted to know to the ordinance, the first one, about the problems in the east part of our town and how we can come to solve those. And I think we need some more discussion on that. And I'll say that I am the only councilman here that lives in the downtown neighborhood. And my neighborhood was in much the same situation in the 70s when we first moved there. And it's coming around, and I'm pleased to see your neighborhood coming around. And I will do everything I can to help you bring that around. But right now, I think we need some more discussion on this particular ordinance.
Okay. All right. So, with that, we're going to go back to business from the public, because I believe, Doug, you had a different item to come forward.
Yes.
Okay. You can go ahead and come forward now. So, you'll need to do the same, Doug, and spell, state your last name, spell your last name, and furnish your address.
My name is Doug Hiddelson. H I D D L E S O N.
Point of order?
Yep.
If you could just be respectful and act quiet.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Doug.
My name is Doug Hiddelson. H I D D L E S O N. I live at 1880 Washington Street here in Albany. I am here to request a license to occupy. I have, I'm a car guy. I have a Costco 10x20 on in front of my shop. It is not on the sidewalk. I asked permission from the city. The lady is now retired. She says, as long as you're behind the telephone poles, it's not a problem. I've been in contact with Cheryl, I'm, excuse me, Jessica Henson, with the City Attorney's Office. I have an appointment to see her when we can get this resolved. I'm not very good at some of this stuff, but I made a drawing. So, the red X area is the place where my car is parked underneath the ony. It is a 67 Galaxy five liter. It has no glass in it right now. I've lived there since '05. I clean the area. I have put a fence all the way around it. We have no more crime on it. But that's, I don't know if this is good enough for you guys to understand where I'm coming from. The street is at the bottom, of course, which is Washington Street.
Yeah, that's Washington.
And I live right by the railroad tracks, which is another issue I'd like to actually come back and discuss with the City Council sometime about the train whistles.
Right. So, I think, Doug, since this is new to the council, then we'll probably have staff check in on it. It's really helpful for us to get some, you know, some actual pictures of what, where the right of way is, where the line is, and all that. So, we can have staff bring a report back to us. So, probably, they'll bring us a report, and then we'll let you know if it's going to be going to work session or if it would be at a council meeting on that.
They talk about future road.
Uh-huh. Yeah. So, okay. So, we'll take that. I'm sorry, as quick this was, that you had to wait this long, but...
Oh, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
I'm getting on a plane at 5:00, 5:40 in the morning.
Yeah. Okay.
NASCAR.
And then, we've talked about the train whistles before, so, yep. And, and I know, it's something with ODOT Rail that they have to be able to kind of oversee.
I think we won't have another person filled there, say, if the switching engine whistle is not the exact same one as the one that's doing 40 miles an hour.
Yeah.
Hold it at, it's less than 5 miles an hour.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Doug. Have a good trip. Okay. Is there anyone else from business from the public? So, okay. All right. Thank you, folks. With that, we are going to go back to the public hearing. And let me pull back through the agenda here. So, I will open the public hearing at 8:31 PM, and will we get a staff report on this? This would be for setting rates for water use and also for the stormwater management services.
You're going to hold one public hearing for both?
Yep. We'll do the public hearing for both.
Okay. So, Jeff Babett's here to answer any questions that you might have regarding the water utility fees and charges. Just a reminder on what they are. It's just some of the miscellaneous fees and charges that you had asked us to look into last time we evaluated our monthly service charges. So, the resolution that's in front of you retains the existing monthly service charges, makes no changes to those, and is only, the changes are only limited to those shown to you in the memo on page three and the resolution provided on page four. If you have questions, Jeff Babett would be happy to answer them for you tonight.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
On stormwater, no planned presentation for you there tonight. We've talked about that at great length over three separate meetings over the last two months here. But it's, I'll just remind you that it's a 5% rate increase that's being considered in the resolution, and that is solely to cover the increased costs associated with inflation, so that we can continue to get the same amount of work done next year that we got done this year.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone that would like to speak on these water rate increase and the stormwater management? Okay. All right. Not seeing anyone. With that, I will close the public hearing at 8:33 PM. And Council, you do have, your first resolution is on page four.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Did you have? Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next is setting rates for stormwater management. That's a resolution that's on page 10.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made. In a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Yeah. Ray?
We're just obviously in a very limited holding pattern with that 5%, because we don't know what's coming down the pike with the state regulations on the permit. And I hope when those come down, that we'll have to make some, make some obviously hard choices, but we need to make those at that point in time and not keep kicking the can down the road. So...
Okay.
We'll know what they are, and staff will bring it back to us.
What did we settle on?
Any other questions? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Now, let's see. Let's see. D on setting the motor vehicle parking fees, we have to hold that one over. And on the backside, you have consent calendar. So, if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening for a discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. Next, Oak Street Rehabilitation. So, this is awarding a bid. This starts on page 47. And Jeff, did you have comments on this one?
Yeah. Stacy's going to take care of the two awards tonight.
Okay.
This first memo, staff is recommending that council award a contract in the amount of $939,785 to Wildish Construction Company of Eugene, Oregon. We received seven bids for this project, and the memo does discuss that we did the project with two schedules. This was done so that we could compare two different street construction methods, one being full-depth reclamation, the other being a more conventional street construction. And we did this because we wanted to make sure that we got the best price for the project. The schedule combination that staff is recommending includes full-depth reclamation, and based on the bids that we received for the project, we would realize approximately $145,000 in savings compared to conventional street reconstruction. The project is estimated to be over budget by approximately $227,000, but there are adequate reserves in the street capital fund and the water capital fund to cover the overage. Are there any questions?
Your break.
Just to comment, a lot of folks, you know, wonder what the cost of doing road construction is, and we're going through that issue all across the community. You know, if you just do some basic math, roughly $2 million for just the construction for 2,400 lineal feet, you're talking over $830 a foot to reconstruct a road. Now, maybe that doesn't sound like a lot, but then you look down your block and you see all the road that needs to be constructed, and you go, whoa, that adds up very, very fast.
Yes, it does. Yeah.
$1 million dollars a mile.
Okay. You have Bill then, Dick?
I just want to compliment staff. You know, I read this and was curious as to why the A and B and Bs, and A and B and B and C. And, you know, continued to read into that, and it's, you know, kudos. That's good thinking on staff's part to be aware of those different circumstances. And just to verify, you know, what it is that you're thinking. Also, glad to see Wildish. I haven't been in town for a while.
They haven't.
Certainly a good outfit, well-respected. The other curious thing is that Emery &amp; Sons is doing all of our work downtown, and they were high bidder out of the set. I mean, there's a lot of reasons. I mean, one is that they're busy, but, I mean, it's curious. I'm not assigning any conspiracy to it. I'm just kind of curious.
I know. I was surprised when I saw that.
Yeah. They may be more competitive on jobs that have more hype work.
Sure.
Okay. Council, what would you like to do with this item?
Nice question. Do you have to take out any trees to do this project?
Not on Oak Street, no.
Oh, good. Seems like every project, you have to take out a bunch of trees. And I get a lot of comments about it. Why do the trees have to go? I'm glad you're not.
The pavement's in pretty bad shape in front of that school, so a lot of the buses really is, really wear and tear on the, you know, street system.
Yeah.
Maybe we ought to text the school district.
Yeah.
Well, we need to have the school district arrange their attendance areas so they don't have to do so much of busing. People from my neighborhood have to be bused to a Lafayette school of all crazy things.
Yeah. Well, and it's true with Oak School, because Oak School used to be, my neighborhood was built to have the paths that ran through the whole neighborhood to walk to the, you know, the playground area of Oak School. And then probably, gosh, closer to 30 years ago, they switched the whole neighborhood to Lafayette and then they're bussed. So, but yet, the, you know, neighborhood was built for walking, to make a walkable neighborhood to a school. So, yeah.
And how? Why did they get changed?
That was part of the school districts. Different form of government, so that's not us, so, but yeah. You know, I know, it was pretty contentious back then. The neighborhood really kind of had an uproar over it, but it's been that way ever since.
They didn't roar enough, because it didn't change back.
I know it. Yes. So, okay. What would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve contract.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I hope this is smoother than Three Lakes that Wildish did.
So, yeah. That I don't know. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Stacy, next one.
So, staff's making a recommendation that council award a contract in the amount of $1,875,359.50 to R&amp;R General Contractors of Salem, Oregon. We received six bids for this project, ranging from the low bid to approximately $2.5 million. The project will reconstruct Hill Street from Queen Avenue to 24th Avenue. And in addition to the street construction, there's going to be new curb and gutter, new sidewalks, new landscaping improvements, and new storm drain as well. And on Hill Street, we're going to be doing conventional street construction because of the existing parabolic curve that's on the crown of the street. So, it's going to be lowered about nine, nine inches across the length of the project.
So, so this is a total of close to, with 2.7 million, and this is from Queen to 24th, so then we still have 10 more blocks. So, you're estimating about the same amount, do you think?
A bit more. The next phase is also going to include a water line. We constructed the water line on this phase back in, I think it was 2013.
Okay. Yeah.
So, but, but we are proposing to construct the next phase to budget in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Because I think the total project was around 6 million then, right? For the whole, from 24th to 30th, from Queen to 34th, and doesn't count what was already done with work on a water, water line is probably additional. Yeah.
Sure. Just, just information for folks watching or something on, in the audience. Stacy, how long does it take from initial inception on the CIP, when it's put on it, to get to this point where we're actually releasing it to actually get a bid to have it done?
It's generally going to take approximately, approximately a year from when we develop the budget from the project, and then we adopt the CIP. So, I need to...
When does it first get put on to the CIP? How long ago?
It could be seven years from the time it starts on the CIP, the time we're actually getting to construction.
Yeah. It just starts running up through the priority line.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any questions? This is one project I'm looking forward to because I get lots of complaints over this one. Yes.
And you get to drive on it.
Yes, I, actually I avoid it, so. It's pretty bad, yeah, your car just, but at least it's good traffic calming devices on that road.
Second.
Okay, all right, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. And Ed, it's coming up for the Sunrise Park remodel. Is, was there revised, something on our dais?
Yes, there should be a revised, front page of the memo. And the error was in the action requested paragraph. The amount of our request was wrong. It didn't reconcile with the number that is in the table. And so, the correct number instead of two fifty-seven even is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred, which does reconcile with the table. There's a long explanation, but in short, it was my mistake. That's where we are. So, very, very briefly, this is a project a long time coming, as most of you know, a couple of years at least trying to deal with wetland issues and things like that and a couple more kind of lining up the funds. So, we are finally to the point of building this project. You'll see on page fifty-seven that we received four bids ranging from three hundred and fifty-four thousand and change to almost seven hundred thousand, quite a disparity with the original engineer's estimate, our consultant of two hundred and fifty thousand. So, the numbers are all over the place. We had not three hundred and fifty-four thousand to construct this project, and so we have managed to get the number down to two hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred. This is all CDBG, Community Development Block Grant funding for that two hundred and fifty-nine five. The way we got the number down was to reject the two add alternates that were included in the original bid package and then we put together the bid documents so that we had unit pricing and on the concrete work, and so we've eliminated a big chunk of the concrete work. We'll do that concrete work later as funds are available. They're just not available for the project at this time. I guess the only other thing I'd like to add is that the Park and Recreation Fund also has about sixty to seventy thousand dollars budgeted in the current fiscal year for this project. We'll be spending that money buying furniture directly, site furnishings, playground equipment, light poles, trash cans and so forth for the project, and we'll be installing all that equipment. Anything vertical is going to be installed by the park maintenance folks. They know how to do that and it's far less costly for us to install playground equipment than to have a contractor come in and do it for us. So, the contractor in this job is doing essentially the site work, the excavation, the flat work, and we'll take everything vertical after they're out of the way. We'll also do the demo work in-house. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Ed, do you perceive that in the next CBDG funding go-around, that some funds will be attached to finish that project off then, or where do you think those funds are going to be?
I guess it's a possibility. I'm leaving that to Ann. If, if we do have some additional CDBG funding in the next fiscal year, then we can certainly use it to complete that, that walk. If not, we're going to figure out another way to do it. I just don't know what that way is yet.
Right now, we're sort of in limbo and not knowing for sure where, if CDBG is going to be funded at the federal level. So, so right now, it's sort of a day-by-day, you know, seeing if we're going to be getting more funding or not. Yeah, Bill?
So, I was just looking at Task Unit One, which were the bid results, but this was obviously the base bid plus the alternates. And I just, the question is, when you exclude the alternates, the assumption is North Core was still low.
So, Bill, the, the spreadsheet, the construction contract bids are just base bid only, did not include the add alternates? So, this is just base bid.
Oh.
The add alternates would have driven the price up significantly.
Sure.
Right. And I, maybe I would add that we did a line-by-line, item-by-item comparison of all four bids based on a reduction, per-unit reduction in concrete, and North Core still came out low. So, we did it line item by line item across all four bids, and it didn't put any of the other bidders in a negative position.
So, you had discussions with North Core, North Core on your strategy?
Yes, yeah, we have. Yeah, and they're fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we actually value engineered with them as a partnership with them before we brought it to you. So, and explained that we were going to knock down the amount of concrete that we were going to construct.
Right.
And, and they got that.
Okay. And I've never heard of North Core.
Yeah, I have not. I'm not sure it's one of your...
Yeah, it's a commemoration of folks from civic excavation and...
Oh, okay. Well, you see that all the time where people break off and start their own place, so.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with them at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Okay, Council, what would you like to do with the item?
Move to approve.
Very. Okay, motion's been made to approve in a second. And is there any just more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. So, and I think Dick can also contest too in the Community Development Commission meetings. This has been a subject for a long time, so the commission members were really pleased to see that this project was finally going to be taking place, so.
I was afraid it was going to all leave.
Yeah. I know.
I doubt that, Dick. I doubt that.
So, thank you, Ed. You've worked a long time on this one too, so, thank you. Okay, next is the intergovernmental agreement between City of Albany and Lynn County Sheriff's Office. This is one item that was on your Monday agenda, and this begins on page fifty-eight. Any, yeah, Jorge, would you like to comment on it or?
Just a quick recap. We entered into a temporary agreement with the Lynn County Sheriff's Office back in 2014 to authorize staff to start working with them to start developing this project. We went to, we went through an RFP process and in 2015, we contracted with Sun Guard. Sun Guard is the name that used to have, they used to have before. But basically, in April of 2017, we completed the project and it's implemented. It's between, we have Lynn County Sheriff's Office, we have City of Albany Police, we have Fire Department of City of Albany, we have multiple other fire departments, and now we're trying to expand and incorporate other government entities into this. And that's why it's important to have a, an agreement where we have a consortium that we'll be managing to ensure basically the operation and management of this category system that is more than just our small region here.
The county just passed this yesterday and the, yesterday, yesterday and the sheriff signed off on it.
Oh, okay. Great.
Good presentation went, or Monday, and it was good to hear from Michael Smith too to see the sheriff's perspective on it, so.
It's, it has, it has become something that is a whole lot more complicated than it started. And, you know, when it was started, it's gee, they're spending a lot of time working on forms. And now it's the whole thing and everything about it and it's going to be incredibly nice to, for a police officer in, in Philomath to be able to know what happened to the guy he, he just stopped who yesterday got a ticket at Sandy Am Pass by the Sheriff's Department or coming up on I-5 by the state police, you know, that he was, had an attitude or there was a gun involved or all kinds of stuff, so, really neat.
Okay, okay, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next, Ed, we've got a report for approving a request to change one of your staff positions.
Yes, I don't think there's much explanation here. I'll answer questions if you have them. This position was created a couple of fiscal years ago and we were trying to save money. In hindsight, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do a point seven five FTE, but nickels and dimes were important at that point. And what this is requesting is to up that position to a full FTE. The difference is wages, the number of hours that we'll pay, or not benefits. And we're offsetting that completely with the number of temp hours that we're mowing right now. So, that's, that's the, the desire.
Okay, all right.
Was that person getting benefits before I went to full-time?
The person is getting benefits right now at a point seven five FTE, yes.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Ed, how much do you think was, were the contracted amounts that, like to fill in?
Like the hourly rates or?
Yeah, because you know, like you have line item contracted services and so.
Oh, you know, yes, I forgot. I was gonna, I knew you were going to bring that up and I was going to bring up the total amount of money that was budgeted in contractual services.
Yeah.
And I didn't do that, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But it's, it's in the tens of thousands of dollars that we budget, and so this will reduce the number of hours that we, we have to work.
And also you don't have to retrain and retrain and retrain.
And the turnover and the retraining and quite, as I, as I suggest in my memo, we've had kind of an unstable year on our staffing at the Parks and Recreation Department. And we want to make sure that we are dealing just with full-time staff at the front desk and not having to worry about training and retraining and rearranging for temporary staffing all the time.
I think it's a fair assumption.
It's just too much work and it quite frankly costs more money than it's worth.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, questions? What would you like to do?
I would move to approve the change in the clerk two position from point seven five to one point FTE.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Much appreciated. And on the Sunrise Park, I failed to mention a person that's just done yeoman's work getting this project moving and getting us through wetland permitting and so forth, and that was Ann Catlon, who also coordinates the CDBG committee.
Yeah, she has really spent a long time.
Yeah, she's done a wonderful job.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Ed. So, okay, next, we've got business from the Council, but we have one agenda item here that was carried over from Monday. And this would be over the request for the connection fee reserves for the Skyline Terrace area. And Jeff, did you want to walk through kind of the whereas that was brought forward on the resolution, or was there anything that we needed to?
I don't know that I even have them. Have a copy in front of me here, actually. I'd have to have one passed to me if you'd like me to do that.
Yep, should be in front of you. There's two resolutions.
So, you have two resolutions in front of you tonight. Hopefully, we captured the essence of what you were hoping to accomplish. You have, first one is titled, "A Resolution Authorizing the Use of Sewer Connection Fee Reserves to Fund Approximately Two Hundred and Twenty-Five Foot Sewer Extension on Skyline Terrace." And basically, the way we step through these is to try to tell a story. That's how I understand whereas statements are supposed to be, be written. And so, we provide the context of where the code authority comes from, state some of the facts that were presented over the last several discussions that we had, reference the costs that are associated with it, that we have adequate funds to construct it and that it meets the criteria. And then ultimately, that's the will of the Council to move forward with it if you so choose. Also note, the primary requesting property owners offer to complete the, have the design completed and submitted to us to use for construction. And so, you see that down at, at the bottom there. Either Stacy or I can answer any detailed questions that you have if, if you want to discuss it further. The second resolution is unrelated, it's related just because the discussion was, was sparked by the request, but it's truly a separate standalone action. And that's a resolution where Council would temporarily suspend consideration of further public requests for infill projects funded with connection fee reserves. Essentially, what this would accomplish is it would allow all other aspects of the program to continue, so where developers are, are building infrastructure, entering into capital recovery agreements and seeking reimbursement through future connection fee payments, that would all be able to continue. But what we, we wouldn't consider is further requests like the one that we just discussed until Council was able to have discussions about desired review criteria for selecting, selecting projects or prioritization process or otherwise establish a policy is how I, how I wrote that. It also notes that there was a desire to evaluate the fee amount for connection fees and that those discussions would, would happen at the same time. And again, trying to put words in your mouth here based on, on what I thought I heard on Monday. No pride in authorship. Feel free to edit.
I think you captured it quite well.
It does look like you captured it well. Is, Council, was there anything that you see that was missing?
So, did I understand him to say that their project gets in under the wire in its projects after theirs?
That was my understanding of Council's request.
So, the one resolution is, it pertains to their sewer connection. The other resolution would be temporarily suspending any future requests.
For ones after theirs.
Questions?
Did you catch that?
Okay, Council, so you'll want to take action on the, the first one that would be authorizing the connection fee reserves for that Skyline Terrace project?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all right, motion's been made in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried with one growl, so.
He's hungry.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'm not. I just wanted to growl because, well, you know.
You need a Snickers.
Don't need a Snickers.
So, next would be suspending, temporarily suspending any future requests, that resolution.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Yes, I hope this then galvanizes us to move this up the priority list to get this to, discussion to, to come up with a solution on this.
Yeah, so.
Rapidly.
Yeah. Okay, all right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, and maybe with that, maybe can pull together, you know, maybe three counselors to kind of see about coming up with, get some draft language for a new policy and kind of work it out with the Council and.
I'd have to grill them.
Yeah.
If, if Council wouldn't mind, I'd, I'd like to have an opportunity to come in at a work session without kind of a formal presentation or.
Okay.
Anything, just have an open discussion, just like we're having in an informal meeting, just to talk through things and get some general concepts out there.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
One, one thing.
Thank you.
Probably different connection fees for people, regular folks versus people who are infilling because the, there's a gigantic difference in cost.
There's a number of concepts we can consider.
All right. Okay, so now we're on to business from the Council. Best, do you have anything?
Nothing.
All right, Bill?
I was sitting here smiling at myself earlier when Rich was talking about, you know, the guy that's pulled over in Philomath that yesterday was pulled over up at Sandy Am Pass. Which, no, but it reminded me of the Blues Brothers movie back in nineteen ninety-one when Jake and Elle would get pulled over and Jake says, rats, they probably have SCAMOTS. And he said, SCAMOTS? State, county, municipal offenders data system, so. Even in ninety-one in Chicago, they had the system for so.
You've lost that.
Oh, it's one of my favorites, yeah. That's all I have.
Living in a sweet home or not participating.
Okay, Dick, did you have anything? Okay, Rich, did you have anything?
Not tonight.
Okay, Ray?
Nope.
Mike? Okay, and I didn't, and so Peter?
I just wanted to bring your attention that Commissioner Tucker at the, at the county has sent me an email the other, other day indicating that he wants to, he's been asked to pull together a group to further understand housing affordability. And he recommended a webinar that's coming up on the twenty-second, and I'll provide this information to you on Friday. It's a webinar on the statewide housing plan, March twenty-second at eleven-thirty. And then he's also asked for the COGS help to facilitate an affordable housing conversation, which is to be held in June. which is to be held in June, and again, I'll pass that information to you in, in the Friday email.
Okay, great, all right, anything else? Staff have anything else?
No.
So, anything else, okay. With that, we will recess to executive session to discuss pending litigation or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS one-nine-two point six-six-zero-two-H, and we will take a break real quick.
Yes.